Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Tuesday, February 15, 2011. We're here in the John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. I want to welcome those members of the public that are here with us, our city family, and also our viewers on Channel 35, which broadcasts us live each meeting during—throughout the city's cable system, also rebroadcasts us in the evening. We're also available online at lacity.org, where you can click on the links to live streaming webcasts of our council meetings and archive footage of our past council meetings, as well as all of our agendas and the supporting materials that council members receive on those items as well are available for members of the public. You also can testify remotely from Van Nuys City Hall or San Pedro City Hall, if that's closer to where you live, and you can finally use your telephone to listen in on these council meetings. That's (213) 621-CITY, (213) 621-CITY, and those are the five ways you can track your city council in action. We have almost a quorum here. Thank you to council members Cardenas, Coretz, Grecorian, Perry, Reyes, Smith, and Zine. Mr. Weezer is excused today, Mr. Labons is excused today, and Mr. Parks is excused today, but we do expect Mr. Alakon, Ms. Hahn, and Mr. Rosendahl and Mr. Wesson. They'll please join us as soon as possible while we await them to establish a quorum. We are waiting for two more council members. Thank you for your patience. In the meantime, if you'd like to speak on any of the items that are before us, there are cards in the back, and you can fill those out, or in our remote locations in San Pedro and Van Nuys, and that's the city staff or the sergeants-at-arms, and we'll be sure to put those in the mix. All items receive a public hearing either in committee or here in council. They've already had a hearing in committee. They're not automatically triggered by a card from the public, but require a council member to reopen. But any item that has not yet had a hearing, if you submit a card, we will automatically hear your comments today. There's a code of conduct there, and a two-minute clock to help you guide your comments to the council. And also, we have a section called General Public Comment, which is for items not on today's agenda, but nevertheless under the jurisdiction of the city of Los Angeles. So if there's other comments about the city of Los Angeles jurisdiction items that you'd like to give, you can just fill out General Public Comment in the upper-right corner and hand that in. Again, thank you to the council members who are here on time or awaiting two more council members to constitute a quorum. Mr. Rosendahl's joined us, so we are one short. Again, council members Alakon, Hahn, and Wesson, if you'll please join us as soon as possible. As soon as we get one more of those members, we will begin the meeting. Thank you. This is our last quorum call for council members Alakon and Hahn and Wesson. If they'll please join us as soon as possible. If the sergeants-at-arms can please assist us. I believe these two of those folks are in the building. If we can get them here. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, Mr. Labons was excused, but he is here today. Please call the roll.
Alakon, Cardenas, Hahn, Weezer, Coretz, Grecorian, Labons, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti. Ten members present and a quorum. Mr. President?
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Zine seconds without objection. Those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Coretz moves with Mr. Grecorian seconding without objection. Those will be approved as well. I can please ask everybody in council chambers to rise for our pledge of allegiance, which we do every Tuesday. And Mr. Coretz, will you be kind enough to lead us in the pledge?
Yes, everybody put your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Coretz. If we can run through today's agenda, please.
First item on the agenda, item one, is the Tokyo Business Improvement District Notice for Public Hearing. Council should open the hearing and continue that to March 22nd.
Okay, without objection, we'll open that hearing and continue that till the 22nd of March. Next items?
Items two through eight are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, is there any objection to consideration? Seeing none, those are before us. I'd like to call three special, and we have cards on that as well. Are there cards on any of these items?
No, Mr. President.
All right, we'll close the hearings on the other ones. Any specials, colleagues? If not, let's take up the balance then. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next items?
On the supplemental agenda, item nine is an item for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, anybody wishing to call nine special? If not, let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next items?
Items 10 and 11 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
There's no objection to consideration. Those are before us. Specials? Mr. Smith? Okay. Do you want to make those corrections, or are we waiting them?
Go ahead.
Okay, circular. We'll call that special for the corrections. We'll close the public hearings. There's no cards on either of those.
Mr. President, there actually is a card now on item 10.
On item 10, we'll call that special for a card from the public, and therefore, we will have both of those called special. We'll go to our general public comment now. Yeah, Mr.--
Could I ask that staff from Public Works, Street Services come to the ropes? Thank you. And item nine needs to be reconsidered because of a change from the Department of Aging.
Okay, let's go ahead and reconsider nine then. Please open the roll in reconsideration. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. We'll go to General Public Comment now, and item for General Comment and our items specific for Public Comment, as well as our General Public Comment, we will take now. Daniel Gus is our first speaker. Good morning to you, and John Walsh will follow.
Good morning, City Council. On Monday, I got a contact from the National Emergency Response Team at People for the Ethical Treatment of Animals, because our $200,000-a-year shelter boss, Brenda Barnett, can't recognize that this is a violation of the law. Eighty degrees Saturday, a dog on a one-foot tether. No food, no water, no shelter. Same dogs back in December. Feces and urine floating in the same rainwater as the dog's food. They belong to a homeless man. Animal Services seized these dogs last summer. Another rescuer bailed the dogs and gave them back to the homeless man. Brenda Barnett has been aware of the situation for months. Here's in the heat of August. The dog is tethered to the bottom of a tractor trailer at 60th and Western. No food, no water, no shelter. For some reason, Brenda Barnett wants to play social worker when she's paid to run a law enforcement agency. Tony Cardenas said last summer, "You run a law enforcement agency." Here's season after season. Brenda Barnett is not responding. I posted videos of these situations on YouTube. Go to youtube.com/StandFoundation, and you'll see these dogs in the middle of the summer, the middle of the winter, suffering through obvious violations of the city's municipal code. I guess the problem is Brenda Barnett doesn't want to earn her $200,000, and I'm puzzled by that. She doesn't have a day of law enforcement experience. She doesn't have a day of public shelter management experience. And putting Brenda Barnett in front of Animal Services here is like taking an LAPD recruit and giving the recruit Charlie Beck's job. So now, PETA's national office contacted me first thing yesterday morning, so they will come to City Council and the mayor's office, saying, "Why aren't you acting on this?" Please bring in Brenda Barnett, put these videos up on the screen, and ask her to respond to them. I'll be here with the photos if you want to see them up close. Please, come take a look.
Thank you, Mr. Gus. John Walsh is our next speaker. Good morning.
Good morning. John Walsh blogging at Hollywood Highlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S.org. Check out our most recent blog. We put up a few days ago. And HollywoodDems@gmail.com for email. And go to our Facebook for the latest, and that's Miki Jackson, M-I-K-I. You know, it's simpler in Juarez. People like me, we're taken out with shot, and then our parents and our children and everybody are killed. Here, they just threaten namby-pamby stuff. It's not the— but don't worry, we're going to catch up. Elevators. Maybe you're going to see what I'm saying now on KCBS. Go check your elevators. They're all in need of inspection. The one-year period of inspection has lapsed in every single elevator here, every elevator in the library system, all over. Now, they're paying no attention until the media picks this story up. So I'm asking Mr. Goldstein to come here, and just go out here and realize you're taking your life in your hands. You're not going to be able to say you didn't hear it. HollywoodHighlands.org. Who's missing here? Isn't it a coincidence that for personal reasons, the three city councilmen are all running for office? Jose Weezer is out there running for office. That's why he's not here. Janice Hahn at least has the decency to show up occasionally. And I'm telling you right now that it's just a matter of time before you're swept out. HollywoodHighlands.org, one million successful server requests last year. Thank you. Take your one and two second.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Richard Robinson is our next speaker for General Public Comment. Good morning, sir.
Morning, sir. And my notes, somewhat tedious notes. Sir. Honorable President, Members, Richard Robinson. While visiting San Francisco in '81, it can be kind of stiff-necked, because I'm quite proud of having had the honor of having met Dianne Feinstein when she was the mayor of San Francisco. She walked up to me and shook my hand. I was doing some work in the streets of San Francisco. Sir, I was approached in 1981 by Joseph Alejito Jr. Joey asked me if I needed work, 1981. I worked for the Alejito family, Genovese family, during the summer of '81. In the kitchen, 30 years ago, I was given the most exquisite food imaginable, wine, .59 Lafitte Rothschild.
Mr. President, I don't think he's talking about something in the jurisdiction of the city.
To make a long story short--
Bring it back to Los Angeles, please. Thank you.
I've been working as a doorman at Trastabera. And again, respectfully, Your Honor, I ask simply that a separate line be provided for that restaurant because of some folks there who don't like the Italian family there in the entertainment center. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. When you brought that up, we did inform the owners of the Hollywood and Highland Mall about that, so I know that they're looking at that, and we'll continue to work on it. Thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. Rick Nightengale is our next speaker in Van Nuys. After that, we'll come for item number three. Good morning, sir.
Yeah, Rick Nightengale. You know, I just found out, you know, when Mr. Garcetti, you turn around and brought up this thing about bullets and so forth, it really upsets me very, very much. I just found out, you know, the silicone and the other bullets, they've been illegal for the federal government for a long time, that you and our chief turns around, gets on the news to bring up about the hollow points. I mean, you talk about an in-run type thing, just trying to get the hollow points illegal. It's crazy. I mean, it's just lousy crazy, and it's another thing that you turn around and you're giving false statements completely, and so do any other councilmen, got on the bandwagon to back you up. That is just ridiculous what the council's doing. I'm telling you, you people need to turn around, and I don't like to say Republican, Democrat, or so forth, but you people need on out there, need to vote these people out and go and get a whole new regime in there that is going to do something. There was Paul—I can't remember what district, his last name—that turned around and tried to go against you last week, and boy, you just crucified him. Garcetti and a few other of you people just got on his case because he kind of went against you a little bit. I mean, this is what happens when they're all up there. If you want to say it's a darn Mexican mafia up there, just turn around doing it. Yes, there's 48% in the city, like I said, it's Mexican. But I'm sorry, or Hispanic, or however you want to put it. But I'm telling you, it sounds like I'm a bigot, but I'm even trying to help an illegal buy a house. I admire this man so much that I'm trying to help him buy a house. So it's not that I'm against anybody, but I'm against all the corruption that you people have that's turning around and doing this. And you got to turn—the people have to turn this thing around and get these people out, because everybody that turns around and gets in there, they gang up on these people, and then they have—and if they want to get something done, you play ball with us and we'll play ball with you. And you need to get these people out, because they're not going to go against their families and their heritage to turn around in the city of Los Angeles. It might sound that I'm a bigot to get all of you Hispanics out there, but that's what has to be done, because you've taken over this place.
Thank you, sir. I know the clock isn't working out there, but thank you. That's the end of the two minutes. Thank you for your comments today. We'll go to item number three next, and we'll take public comments on item three. Our first speaker is Roy Oldencamp. After that is Connie Terwinski.
Good morning. I'm Roy Oldencamp. I live in West Hollywood. I work in Hollywood. I'm a co-founder of WeHonor, the West Hollywood Neighborhood Alliance, and we strongly endorse pulling the Barnesdale Art Park off the RFP proposals. I hope you've all been up there. You see what a great place it is. The long-term staff has done a great job. Also, as a side note, I market movies for major studios, for six studios. I'm happy to put that knowledge towards Barnesdale Art Park to increase revenue there for you, and I'm sure it can be a fantastic self-sustaining facility right away. And I think if you can—if you haven't been up there lately, go back up and check it out, because it's a great gem in the middle of the city for us, and it does not need to be corporatized. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Connie—is it Terwinski?
Terwinski, thank you. Thank you, council members. I don't think it's too strong to say that Barnesdale has saved my life. I'm a student there. I've been a student for 18 years, on and off. I'm a member of the Baxac Council, and to change it—I'm for the RFP being removed. I think we need to find funding to run this place. The budget's been cut deeply at this point. We'd love to know what the numbers are, quite honestly. We haven't been able to even get a number to figure out funding for it outside of the city. So I request, in the meantime, that you keep it funded by the city until you give us the right information to find other funding for it. It's only logical to do that. Thank you.
Mr. John Walsh?
John Walsh blogging at Hollywood Highlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S.org. I remember what first time I—before I lived in San Fran—in Los Angeles, when I was in the Bay Area, coming down for the Garden Festival. Who remembers the Garden Theater Festival at Barnesdale for eight or nine or 10 years? I guess I'm the only one up. Okay, Labons, of course, he would remember. Thank you. Now, you've stripped it of almost everything. I mean, if Aileen was still alive, she'd be spinning in her grave. I'm telling you right now, public-private enterprise, this is the profit motive. That was not built—Barnesville was not built on the profit motive. It was built for the common good, and now you're going to hand it over. HollywoodHighlands.org for all the information. Thank you.
Marlin Warren?
Hi. I'm a journalist, and I have a blog. I've been blogging about Barnesdale recently, and I'm unaccustomed to public speaking, so I'm just going to read from what I wrote. "I urge you, City Council Members, to remove Barnesdale from the request for proposals list and try to find alternatives that lead away from private ownership. I like Barnesdale Art Park. I like going there every morning to do Tai Chi. I like the profound feeling of peace the park gives me. This feeling is due to the fact that it is open to anyone who wishes to enjoy it. For the pleasure of all," as Aileen Barnesdale stipulated when she donated the property in 1927. "Right now, there is a gentle live and let live atmosphere that welcomes the meditator, the exerciser, the artist, and the merely curious. Privatization could change all that. There is a war on art going on in the U.S. It goes hand in hand with the war on poverty, the war on the poor. We must fight ignorance. We must fight poverty. We must leave room in our society for original thoughts and messages that make us see with new eyes, and for the beautiful mystery that is inherent in all art. Most importantly, we must let that which is public remain public. As Aileen Barnesdale herself put it, 'for the pleasure of all.'" Thank you.
Thank you very much. Erin Donovan?
Hello, everybody. Good morning. My name's Erin Donovan. I'm the president of the Barnesdale Arts Center Student Advisory Committee, and I'm here also representing the Barnesdale Alliance and Save Barnesdale, and we represent thousands of people from communities all over the area, the Thai, Armenian, the Korean, Latino, South and Southeast Asian communities, and other local businesses and neighborhood councils, and thousands of individuals. And we request that Barnesdale facilities be city-funded and city-run, and to keep all current staff positions. Currently, there are 7.5 positions that remain. 9.5 positions were lost due to layoffs and retirement, and some of those positions were security. There is only one security person that comes in the evening, late at night, and there's a lot of people that know this, and a lot of gangs have been coming up onto that hill and knowing that they have free rein of the hill. What we also have done, we have increased class registration, the largest in 12 years. We've increased scholarships for the Junior Arts Center. We have provided a wide variety of high-quality, affordable community art classes, provided classes for physically challenged and chronically ill youth and their siblings, attracted new students and families at both the Barnesdale and Junior Arts Centers. We've provided fundraisers. This list goes on and on. Solutions for keeping the park open and run and city-funded, well, there's $25 million in the 1% for the arts funding that we could review. We could review the CRA funds for cultural sites such as Barnesdale. In that basket, there is $900 million. So this is something we can all accomplish together. We support the motion to take it off of the RFP. Thank you, guys, very much. Oh, I'd like to also submit these for the record, please.
Okay, I'll have them pick that up. Roberta Morris.
Hi. My name's Reverend Roberta Morris. As Executive Director of Art Walk and Coordinator of the Los Feliz Art Walk with Reverend Dan Hooper, and a member of East Hollywood Neighborhood Council Arts and Culture Committee, I facilitated earlier conversations on the crucial role Barnesall Art Park plays in our community and grew increasingly concerned about how the RFP process delayed development so that the facility might better serve the community. At the same time, the community has mobilized to save Barnesall from threatened budget cuts and concerns that the RFP process might threaten the public nature of the community arts programming. Today, I'm here to encourage the council to support the community in its resolve and Eric Garcetti and Tom LeBange's motion to save Barnesall and have it removed from the list of facilities that will be subject to the RFP process. We will continue to work together to ensure Barnesall is fully funded so that it can continue to serve the community and be a fully accessible art park. Furthermore, my board has passed a motion to partner with other community groups, the neighborhood churches, and possibly nearby hospitals with whom we work to help raise funds for major improvements in public visibility and accessibility of the park. We are committed to Aileen Barnesall's vision for community arts, children's arts, and a fully accessible park appropriately funded for the community. Thank you.
Ziva International, AKA Zazin.
Shan, that was almost right. International was just perfect. That way, I don't have to have everybody mispronouncing the last name. Hi, everyone. I'd like to thank you all for the great resolution you gave Ziva International, me, for the great resolution that you gave Ziva International, me, and Ziva, the Art of Wellness, for bringing in a new era of arts inspiration, natural health and wellness for all people to L.A. It's a beautiful resolution. I'm grateful. Thank you. Now, I'm back in Los Angeles, and I would like to continue bringing in arts inspiration, natural health and wellness to Los Angeles via this gem of a park, Barnesall Art Park. Number one, Barnesall Art Park is central in L.A. and through its ups and downs in the 20-some-odd years that I have lived here. It has changed in community, but what you have achieved via public transportation now makes Barnesall Art Park once again central to L.A. What has been achieved with the development of the city of Los Angeles and how it is spread out makes Barnesall Art Park central to L.A. The community around Barnesall and community involved in the Barnesall Alliance is diverse. It's the city of L.A. Why, here I am, Ziva International, born and raised at the United Nations, speaking languages, talking to all of the different people who want to bring their arts and culture. I was just at the Indonesian Embassy. Their choreographers are going to come participate in our festivals later this year. All over the world, people know about Barnesall Art Park because of Aileen's legacy, because it is a park for the people, because it is a park that one woman said, "Here, Frank Lloyd Wright, come build me a beautiful place for people to come and share and learn about one another through the arts and bring peace and evolution to the world." You have asked citizens of our city for a new model. I'm on the first Neighborhood Council Arts, Aesthetics and Culture Committee who brought you Gallery Row. Allow the Barnesall Alliance to bring you a new 21st century model. Thank you very much. Namaste.
That concludes today's public hearing on this item. First speaker on the queue is--
But I just asked Mr. Garcetti, we have with us the Los Angeles Job Corps, some great young people. Please rise and be recognized by the city council. We officially welcome you and wish you well in your day, and thank the Los Angelitos for their tour. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. LeBange. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you all very much for coming in today and testifying in support of this motion from Mr. LeBange and myself. You're right. I mean, it's been one of the greatest joys of my time in office representing the art park, to look at the legacy. We had, I think some of you might have been here, we actually had Aileen Barnesall come here. Might have been an actor, but she looked very authentic, and she testified a few years ago here in these very chambers. It's a place that I put on my holiday card this year. It's a place that I did my second swearing-in. It's a place that I discovered as a youth when I took art classes there myself, and it's a place that really captures every medium. When you think about it, we've had, we have plays, we have music, we have graphic art, we have painting, we have sketching, we have ceramics. It really is sculpture. It's one of the few places people can go and embrace all art and created by people, for people here in Los Angeles. And I would actually just only respectfully disagree with one comment, that the place is falling apart. I think that we've together done some amazing things. It was literally crumbling 10 years ago, been neglected for seven or eight years after the earthquake, and we went and got earthquake money to make sure that we could reinforce the buildings. We finally were able to do Frank Lloyd Wright's master plan for the landscaping and to bring olives to Olive Hill. And to see what has happened when we planted those seeds, to see the vibrancy has been so incredible. And, you know, a couple of years ago, as we look at tough budget times, there are immensely difficult decisions we have to make. And one of the things that was put forward was looking at RFPs for, you know, nonprofit partnerships. I think that, you know, as we saw, there isn't the capacity probably to do that, any one group, because as has been articulated here, it is such a big place, and folks have stepped up so well to be able to fill that in, that we have to make sure that we do keep that public aspect in Barnesall. It's part of what the will says, first of all, so it's our obligation legally, but secondly, I think it's probably where we can get the strongest bang for the buck. We have to continue to look for partnerships. I believe that those are strong, and we have a long tradition of partnerships on the hill. I mean, that's been one of the great things, is that it brings different people in, and we need to bring more resources in, in these lean times, because as was articulated here, while we have those positions that are there, we've lost nine and a half people up there. It's always been a very complicated place, because we've had wrecking parks, we've had cultural affairs and general services, and we need to figure out a way to make that a little smoother, to make it clearer. But in the meantime, I think Mr. LeBange and I strongly support taking this off of that list for RFP, to work on those same issues without the threat of an RFP kind of hanging over our heads, and to continue that partnership. So I just wanted to thank you all for being Barnesall Art Park. You are what it is. You are what it will be. And when we had that meeting up at Barnesall with Mr. LeBange and myself, and I said, "We'll keep the public in the park," I meant it, and so this motion will make sure that that happens today. So thank you very much for your support, and let's build that strength. As much as it's known around the world, the last speaker was saying, it's also a place that so many Angelinos still don't know about, and we have to figure out a way. I mean, if you ask average Angelino, I guarantee you 49 out of 50 don't know Barnesall Art Park yet. And if we can get more people there, that can only bring more resources, that can only bring more participation, that can only bring a better future and a more sustainable future. So let's work on that as well together. And Mr. LeBange, I'll turn it over to you for some comments as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. Thank you, Mr. Smith, President, members. Thank you. We've had a series of public hearings, and one of the public hearings we had, someone in the back from Barnesall spoke about how they want to roll up their sleeves, how they want to be part of it, which is so a way to help the public-public partnership that is successful in this here. I'm going to ask the department to sit at the center table as we go on. Some of our other facilities that we have in the city, we're pursuing a, what we would call the county method, which happened in the 1990s, and even our very own Cultural Affairs Department in the 1990s under then Al Nodel created the partnership method for this. Give us a quick report, Ms. Cora.
Yes, as you know, we've been working on this since about a year ago now, because there had been a recommendation by the CAO to establish public-private partnerships as a way to keep these facilities open and programmed while minimizing the cost to the city. And so we've been trying to do that. Some facilities, I think, are better poised, as you said, Mr. Garcetti, to go down that path than others. We currently actually have six facilities that have public-private partnerships, including Magorody and Lancashire. So the model does work if it's an appropriate model for that particular entity. And so we're very, we have the Department of Cultural Affairs, are very sort of willing to work with you and with Tom, who's been a huge supporter of Barnesall, to see how we can sustain the activities that are going on there. There are strong partnership opportunities with the support groups that are up there. It's not going to be easy, but we'll do our best to keep moving forward and supplying these services to the greater community at Barnesall. One of the things that I'd like to explore is building relationships with area arts institutions such as LACMA, the Chinese-American Museum, all sorts of different, Hammer, et cetera, to ask them to come in and help us curate at least one or two exhibitions a year, thereby expanding our audience base, as you were saying. You know, sometimes this is a very well-kept secret. So we have some ideas in mind as to how to increase the attendance at Barnesall. We just got a grant from the Getty Foundation, for example, for the Pacific Standard Time, which is going to look not only at the impact of Barnesall Arts Gallery on modern-day, post-World War art here, but also at the Watts Towers Art Center. So we're going to look and see what the city's involvement in the arts community has been since the World War II. So we're really trying to bring new resources and new audiences to Barnesall, but it's just been kind of a, you know, a work in progress in terms of this RFP, now that if this motion goes forward, we can be much more proactive in panning out those--
Exactly. And when you say a work in progress, we go back to our hearing. Mr. Reyes, thank you for your work on the committee, and Mr. Wesson, when it was identified. And I'm looking through all the cards through the clerk's office to find the actual person who talked about the community engagement, because everybody's got to step up. Everybody's got to take off and roll up their sleeves. Everybody's got to find a way to love Barnesall, because Barnesall loves the community. And I think it's real important to take advantage of this opportunity at this moment. And someone mentioned the churches and other schools. Los Angeles City College, the Community College District, is right down the street. They had a fantastic art program. Maybe there's opportunities there to enhance the beauty of Barnesall. So, Mr. Garcetti, this is our challenge, to work together. I know you have great staff. My staff is going to be focusing to help and assist and find new methods to keep Barnesall going in a way that enhances the community life of all the Los Ansones, particularly this part of the city. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. LeBange. Mr. Zine.
The Madrid Theater.
Yes.
What's the process with that compared to Barnesall?
Well, see, the thing is, is that the RFP process, which is now being shepherded by the CAO's office, there are a number of policy issues that have to be resolved by this body that the Department of Cultural Affairs is not in a position to finally make choices on. For example, are we going to ask the contractors to pay rent? If so, how much? Who's going to pay for the utilities? Who's responsible for security, et cetera? There's a number of policy matters that have to be decided before we can issue an RFP, because nobody's going to bid on anything unless they know what their responsibility is. In the case of Madrid, you know that there is a Golden Performance Center, Performing Arts Center, that has been sort of the leading tenant there, and they have told us in the past that they're interested in putting in a bid if we go to a bidding process. So I think that in the case of the Madrid, it's been functioning. It's functioning as it was in the past. There hasn't been the kind of outcry that there has been at Barnesall in the case of the Madrid. So we think that we can move forward in finding an appropriate partnership opportunity there and that we should be allowed to continue that. Needless to say, once we get the RFP out, we're all, the city's always in the driver's seat, because if the bids come in and we're not happy with those bids, then we don't have to accept them, you know? I mean, so it is a process. We're trying, and I think Mr. LeBange has been a really good voice in this, we're trying to put these opportunities out there to see what kind of response we get. If we get really good response, it might be to our advantage to move forward in a partnership mode. If we don't get good responses, then we would come back to you all and say, "We don't think it's in the best interest of the art center or theater in this case."
Now, Barnesall has a constituency that supports it.
Completely.
Which is very positive. How many venues do we have throughout the entire city that fall under Cultural Affairs?
Right now, we have about 18, 15--
And are there any others that wish to pull out from this process?
Yes, the William Grant Still Center. Mr. Wesson worked, well, in response to a huge community pushback, he also asked the council to withdraw the William Grant Still. The William Grant Still is a very special center, because it's very small. It doesn't have parking. It is a former fire station, and so we feel that it's just not a good candidate for a public-private partnership, just because of the, there's not enough space there to be able to really do anything that is--
How many others are there?
I'm sorry?
How many others are there?
There are currently six--
That want to be pulled out?
Just the Barnesall and William Grant--
The two over the 18.
Correct.
Well, two, but we've been counting Barnesall as four facilities.
Different venues, I think, one or--
Yeah. So if you count them that way, then it's six out of the 14.
So is your department supporting this or opposing it?
We're in support of it. Our biggest concern right now is that we need to find funding, a funding strategy to keep them open for the balance of this fiscal year. We've put forward a plan, which includes a $98,000 commitment from our department. We've been working with the mayor's office to come up with $142,000 worth of CDBG dollars, if those are still around. And then we had proposed using $169,000 of prior-year civic council fund monies, which we're meeting with every council member to discuss, to make sure that they don't have already plans for their portion of the money. So we're going through that fact-finding process right now. But our biggest sort of concern right now is to create a strategy that will allow us to keep the park, the Barnesall Park, functioning till the end of the fiscal year. We're working with the CAO's office, and, you know, one of the things that in the Arts Parks Health and Aging Committee meeting last week, excuse me, we were told, well, maybe Council Civic Funds, I'm sorry, it wasn't Arts Parks, it was Budget and Finance. We were told, maybe Council Civic Fund isn't the right avenue. What about working with the council districts where these facilities are based, and maybe some CRA monies or other monies that we're not familiar with or privy to? So one of the things that we're really concerned about is putting this plan in action. Then, of course, we have to tackle what happens in FY 1112. When we submitted our FY 1112 budget package in December, we were still thinking that both Barnesall and William Grant Still were going to be, you know, part of this RFP strategy. So we did not budget for them. And so we need to, you know, really work closely with the CAO. We haven't had our budget meeting yet to figure out how we move forward in FY 1112. So it's not going to be easy, that's for sure.
I understand, and my time is running out. So you're not opposed to continuing in the mode that the community wishes--
No, we're not opposed.
--at this time, and then hopefully before the fiscal year arrives, July 1st, you'll have additional funding, or we'll come back to the table and try and find some other solution?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much. And, you know, first of all, I want to thank the community for showing up, you know? This is the kind of partnership that will make us make it happen in the years ahead. We're in a tough spot. We don't have the money, and if community steps up and believes in something and fights to keep it, that's how we will be able to keep the doors open in a lot of places. So hats off to you folks for being here. And I want to thank my two council colleagues for their leadership, both Mr. Garcetti and Mr. LeBange. Now, I need the CAO and CLR, you can get up here real quick, to ask a couple of factual questions. Colleagues, as we know, we're in a budget crisis of great proportion. This is a tsunami that has hit us, and when we hit our spring budget, we'll have 300 to 400 million dollar deficit. And the biggest thing we have to figure out is how to close the holes and make the city run. I'd like to ask you, what does this mean from your perspective in the context of reaching our financial issues and crises going forward? our financial issues and crises going forward?
Terry Sauer with the CAO's office. Councilmember, right now, there were originally fifteen facilities to be included in partnering. William Grant Still had already been removed, and this would remove the additional four or five groups' buildings at Barnstall. At this point, there were a number of issues that have delayed the final draft of the RFP, specifically as it related to some of the maintenance issues. CAO has been looking and working to find additional funding to keep the facilities running through the end of the fiscal year. We have identified some additional funding in addition to the ninety-eight thousand and a hundred and forty-two thousand. We'll be coming back with a recommendation within the next couple of weeks to transfer that, to deal with the transfer of that money and keep these facilities operational. Additionally, we will be working with the department as part of the budget process to identify funding for both William Grant Still and Barnstall as we go forward. We expect, we still, again, have to resolve a number of issues with the city attorney on maintenance. We're waiting for some language. We would hope to come back with an RFP within the next month to two months, and at some point, the RFP would go forward and it would be sometime next fiscal year.
So the big question is, if we remove these four facilities from the RFP, transition them over to public-private partnership, what kind of burden, if any, will this put on the city's general treasury?
The department is funded with revenue from the transient occupancy tax. We're projecting a slight growth in the transient occupancy tax next year. We haven't quite finalized those numbers, and obviously, it's part of the budget that will be coming forth for your consideration in April. With that knowledge, we're looking at how those can best be allocated to these facilities, both William Grant Still and Barnstall.
Are you comfortable with it?
I'm comfortable with what the CAO has reported, yeah.
Okay. And the last question is, we've got a lot of rich people in this town, and they don't pay their fair share of taxes, I'll be candid with you. Most of them set up foundations as a way to shelter and do their own thing and be greatly loved by everybody, but they don't pay the taxes like most people do who don't have foundations. Can we hit them up in a 501(c)(3) relationship and get some of these rich folks to partner with us?
Mr. Chairman, there have been recommendations in the past that the department develop a Friends of Cultural Affairs of 501(c)(3). As I understand it, the city attorney has advised that that group has to sort of be, there has to be an arms-length relationship with that group, otherwise it becomes an extension of the city. The department certainly could explore how that might be implemented, but it really has to, the Recreation and Parks Foundation was founded, that's in place now, and the Library Foundation were put together by outside groups, so what you need is someone from the outside to lead that endeavor, to put that together, so that the department is not directly involved and that the city is not directly involved in that creation.
But it could happen.
Yes, it could.
So to the community, first of all, we'll move forward with this, but find some of those rich folks who really don't pay their taxes and they have all these foundations, and bring them into your family. Let them see the facility and get them to create this kind of foundation that could be a partnership going forward. Thank you all very much for this.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl. Ms. Perry is next on the queue. She returned. Look, you got them both in. Mr. Garcetti.
Just briefly, in closing, thank you again. And there's one other point I didn't raise, because it was raised by one of our speakers about whether the funds are out there. As we look at redevelopment funds right now, I think the governor's made clear, anything up till March first is still okay for us to assign to specific projects, but after that, that's the date he's looking at, sweeping all those redevelopment funds. You know, whatever happens up in Sacramento, and they've got even more difficult decisions to make than us, and I'm sympathetic for us doing something to contribute our fair share, and we have to look in places where we've had successful redevelopment and it's come back, in places like Hollywood. The East Hollywood redevelopment area, though, which is where Barnstall fits into, which came after the earthquake, this is one of, I would say, the greatest barriers to blight. If we keep Barnstall going strong, it is one of those ways that we can ensure that the community doesn't turn back to where we were a decade ago. And it's even shakier in East Hollywood, although we've made some tremendous progress. East Hollywood still continues to need attention. You know, redevelopment's very easy to bash, and people don't understand its way out there, but it's local tax dollars that stay here locally. And certainly, what kept Barnstall alive while we were going through this, I just want to put on the record, was both Mr. Labange and myself taking redevelopment funds that were called AB twelve ninety and putting that right in here to keep our general fund operations going forward. Some say, if you get rid of redevelopment, wouldn't that all go to the general fund? Well, after it goes to the county and they get their sixty percent, and the school district gets its thirty percent, we get left with a little dime or so on the dollar, and it would be very difficult for us to sustain some of these things. So make your voices heard as we talk about this also up in Sacramento, because that's a place that, in the meantime, as we're looking forward, that's one of the funds that we go to, to see if we can keep Barnstall going publicly while we look for these other partnerships and sources of money, too. But again, thank you, everybody, for your activism. Thank you for your involvement, and we pledge to you to continue to keep it public forever.
That concludes the speaker queue for today on this item. Seeing no other speakers, will you proceed to vote? Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That passes. Congratulations. Fourth with? Next item?
Item nine was called special by Councilmember Labange, and there is an amending motion that has been circulated.
Okay. Mr. Labange.
Yeah, this is an amending motion. This is for the Department of Aging, as a request, CAO approval, ask for an aye vote.
Because there is amendment on this, we'll have a public hearing on this. There is only one speaker card.
Thank you.
And so we'll ask Mr. Armanek Noridian, please to come forward.
Respectable council members, fellow Angelos, my name is Armanek Noridian. I'm a liberal writing candidate for District Eight, for City Council. Actually, I want to make comments about item number nine, continued consideration of Arts Parks and Health Aging Committee report, in order to grant funds for Medicaid improvement, for Patient Provider Act, for Beneficiary Outreach and Assistance. Actually, I support with item nine, because it would allow allocation funds, you know, for what, Arts Parks. But, you know, it doesn't specify what, what salaries being spent for what, like except printing and binding, travel, office administration, and should be more concrete. But actually, me myself, I endorse with item nine, because it actually allows use funds, you know, to grant funds, you know, for Beneficiary Outreach and Assistance, you know. Well, yeah. That's about it.
Thank you very much. There are no other speakers on the queue. Let's proceed to vote. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That was as amended. That's correct. Next item?
Item ten, call special for cards.
Item ten, Mr. John Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, and always a pleasure to speak in front of my favorite author, Mr. Smith, and I will buy your book, it's just a matter of time, and it's only seventeen dollars. Notice, they don't say I'm out of order when I plug a city councilman's book. You don't want the city attorney telling me to shut up on that one. Item ten, this has to do with this retail project at Rodeo Road, which you've been dealing with for years and years. The most important thing here is, it proves what we've said all along. CRA, most of CRA's development money comes from block grants. You will not lose that money if the CRA is disbanded. It will simply go through the CDD. So the hundreds of millions of dollars will go through CDD, and CRA will be an added layer of bureaucracy that disappears. HollywoodHighlands.org. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else on the queue? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item, please.
Item eleven, called special by Councilmember Smith, and a substitute motion has been circulated.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before you, councilmembers, is a substitute motion, which replaces the original motion because of corrections that were necessary. The motion before you is going to allow us to return twenty-seven police officers to the field that are currently assigned to the municipal detention center, the county, or the jail downtown. As you recall, a few weeks ago, the police department came forward with a plan to staff the new jail with uniformed personnel. No one here liked that much, certainly the chief of police didn't like that much. He explained as it was, that this was the only option on the table for him. There were no other options. What is before you today was that, also in that discussion, was the fact that everyone heard around here, that while we are doing this, we are also furloughing the jailers, that while we are furloughing jailers, we had to bring uniformed personnel back to take their place in the jail. Nobody liked that option. Nobody thought it was the right thing to do. What is before you today is a loan from the Sunshine Canyon Ammunities Trust Fund. That is a trust fund that was established by a lawsuit with a Sunshine Canyon dump many years ago. The money is legally to be spent only within a few miles of Sunshine Canyon dump in Granada Hills. However, as the controller of the trust fund, the twelfth district council member, I have the option to loan the money. So what is before you is a loan of six hundred and, six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and six dollars. It's been reduced to allow us to bring back those furloughed detention officers, which then puts twenty-seven uniformed personnel back on the streets of LA where they belong. It is a temporary fix. It is not a solution. It is something all of us wanted to bring up and talk about. There is no immediate solution. This is a temporary solution. The immediate solution will take place when we look at the budget in May. But for the time being, we are making a loan that's payable back with no interest to the general fund in two years, with a one-year extension for the next councilman, the twelfth district, which I assume would continue it if necessary, but I cannot make judgments for that person, whoever it may be. But for now, I'm loaning the money to the general fund, allowing those officers to get back on the streets, allowing the detention officers to get off of furlough, get back in the jails where they belong, and solve the problem through July first. The, you see before you are technical amendments. I think it's a win-win-win, as I explained to Chief Beck when we first talked about it. Nobody loses this. Everybody wins, but it is not a permanent solution. So with it, I ask your support, and I know we have one public card. Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Smith, for figuring this out and being able to put those officers back on the street. It's a creative strategy, and your leadership in that is greatly appreciated by us, and of course, we should do it. Thank you.
Mr. Zine?
And I want to continue to acknowledge my colleague in the LAPD Reserve Corps, Councilmember Greg Smith, who's soon going to go to the private sector, but this is a great matter that you're doing to help the detention center. I know we've got representatives here from the department, along with detention officers. I want to acknowledge the fine work that they do. And please stand, the detention officers, folks from the department. Thank you. These are the individuals that deal with the custody of individuals arrested by Los Angeles police officers and higher patrol officers that go through the Metropolitan Jail. So this is a long time in coming, and thanks to Mr. Smith's creativity in finding these dollars to make it happen. The question I have is, how much do we have in that fund, in Sunshine Canyon Fund?
Well, currently, there's about five and a half million, of which four, a little over four million is already committed to other projects in Granada Hills, so available is around a little over a million.
Which leads me to the next question to the city, CAO. How many other funds do we have within the city family where we can tap into those funds for other projects, whether it be releasing folks on furlough or some other type of opportunity where we have these funds? Five million here, ten million here. How many funds do we have? And if the CAO is available, or the representative, I'd like to get a report back to the council on all the funds that we have. I know we've got street furniture funds, we've got pipeline funds. Not everyone knows about the Sunshine Canyon funds, but how many funds do we have within the city of Los Angeles, and how much is in each of those funds? We need to get a report, so some of those dollars, maybe we could divert to help our deficit that we're going into.
We would have to report back on that issue. I don't know all that information off the top of my head.
Yeah, I didn't think you did, and that's why I'm asking for a report back.
All right.
On every single fund, from the pipeline fund, the street, street furniture, every single fund, because I know there's pots of money in different funds for different projects, and we need to get a total of those funds, and if those can help us through the economic disaster we're in now, and then going into three hundred-plus-million-dollar deficit next fiscal year, if we could do that for a short term, but we need to know how much we have and how many funds, so if we can get a report back on that, that'd be appropriate. Also.
Put a timeframe on that, Mr. Zine.
I'd like to get that back, within sixty days, if we could.
We'll see what we can do. It's a big order.
Because they've got to be listed somewhere. I mean, I didn't even know about the Sunshine Canyon Fund, leave alone other funds that we have. The other question I have is, the LAPD plan, does LAPD have a plan to come back with to this body, so we don't have to put folks in the detention category back on furloughs? This is going to, I understand, go for two years. It's a two-year commitment from the Sunshine Canyon with a one additional year extension, but we need to have something take place July first when the new fiscal year.
That would be a discussion for the proposed budget, which is currently in development with the mayor's office, and whether, you know, what level of funding is provided to the police department.
Well, do we have a plan that's being discussed with the police department, or is that excluding the police department? Because they have a budget, obviously, and they're probably considering a lot of options.
Those discussions are happening with the mayor's office and our office relative to the proposed budget.
So even though the Sunshine Canyon funds are going to be available, we're still looking at another option within the city budget to staff that particular facility, Metropolitan Jail?
That's definitely a topic of discussion for the proposed budget, but I don't have an answer today on what it's going to be.
Okay. Commander, could I have you come forward, please, Commander from the police department on this matter? Because I want to make sure it's not shortchanged, and these folks go off furloughs and then all of a sudden jump back on furloughs. Commander, regarding the plan, I know that the department submits a big budget every year. Are there discussions on excluding this Sunshine Canyon, which is obviously not going to continue indefinitely, to staff that without the detention officers on furlough time?
On the budget issues, I'm going to defer to Ms. Folto from Fiscal Operations, and if you have any follow-up questions for the jail operations, I'll come back to that.
Well, the concern is, the department has a huge budget. There's no question it's a huge budget between police and fire. And in this particular category, I know there's some area jails that have been shut down, some other employees put on furloughs, and if we do this at this facility, what are we doing for the other jail operations that we want to bring back up? And if detention officers, as I understand, this is only for Metropolitan Jail, but they won't be on furloughs, but other facilities, they will be on furlough?
No. The motion impacts the entire detention officer classes, all three classes, the entire jail system.
Okay, so it'll affect every jail that's in operation. What about those that we've closed down? Will they come back up because we have additional funds?
It will not come up relative to this motion.
Okay, so this will take care of the current jail operations and current jail personnel, detention officers who are on furloughs?
That's correct.
So citywide?
Yes.
Okay. And then the department's working on a project, hopefully, to find dollars to maintain this in the jail operations, and not depend solely on this to keep the system running.
For next year's budget, we were asked to assume that there are no furloughs in the budget.
Asked no furloughs, okay.
But we, as was mentioned by the CAO, we're currently working with the mayor and the CAO about what our budget will end up looking like and what cuts we may have to take into next fiscal year.
But there is a priority to maintain full staffing of detention officers in the jails to relieve officers, police officers, to go into the field.
Right, and that's a policy issue that, as they mentioned, will be discussed during the budget process.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine, and then we'll do that as a motion without objection. We have four more speakers. Mr. Kerkorian, why don't you go next?
Thank you, Madam President. And, Mr. Smith, congratulations, and thank you for this very creative solution to what's been kind of a vexing problem, because as we've been trying to maintain deployment levels in the police department, it has been a great frustration for me that some of these uniformed officers are being used as detention officers, that when it's entirely unnecessary and absolutely not cost-effective to do so. So I appreciate your creative solution to that problem, and I also appreciate Mr. Zine's request to have a broader look at this. Let's see where we can find other special funds like this that can be used to get us through the short-term deficit that we're facing while the economy continues to improve and revenues begin to. and revenues begin to recover. But I think it's important that we also remember Mr. Smith's warning, which is that this is a temporary solution, and we do still need to find a real, permanent solution to this problem. The second point I want to raise, and Mr. Smith, maybe you can talk to this about this specific case, and this should also be a part of the report back that we get on other funds. These amenities funds are created through settlement agreements and so on, usually with significant restrictions on how they can be used. And we frequently have those uses challenged by the public who comes before us. Mr. Smith, can you talk a little bit about the specific restrictions for utilization of these funds? And are loans treated differently than expenditures in this case? And so if you could give us a little comfort on that. And then also, I would request that, as a suggestion, friendly amendment, I guess, to Mr. Zine's motion, if, when we get reports back about these other funds, very important component of that must be, what are the restrictions on utilization of those funds? And what would be available to borrow? What would be available to spend and so forth?
And I'd be happy. On this particular case, Sunshine Canyon Landfill had an expansion plan years ago with the city and the county, and there was a big lawsuit. Part of the settlement was the creation of amenities funds for the benefit of the neighbors that live around the dump. It's a lulu fee, if you will, locally unacceptable land use fee, that they're paying to the people who bear the burden around there. We have one at Lopez Canyon. We have one at Clarks, the central trash transfer station. Same concept, that the neighborhood that's bearing the burden gets some benefit out of the burden. So that money was restricted to being used five miles within the landfill in the Granada Hills Porter Ranch North Ridge area. Since that time now, there was a little wrinkle in that we had an additional settlement lawsuit last year, year and a half ago, dealing with the additional tax we put on the landfill to match what the county was doing. The county of LA sued us because we were trying to do what they wanted to do, and they didn't like getting their funds split up. We had an additional settlement agreement, and part of that settlement agreement money then was then brought into the Sunshine Canyon Ammonity Trust Fund as well. It did not have the restrictions on it that that money did. So I guess you could say I could bifurcate some of this money and say, this money really wasn't the original Sunshine Canyon money. That'd be a very difficult calculation, but I think for ease of understanding is, Sunshine Canyon Trust Fund is off-budget, as is the Clarks budget, as is the Lopez settlement budget. These are off-budget trust funds established for a specific purpose. And there are a lot of them in the city. Those are the three I know very well. So they have strings attached. And so that was what I alluded to, that there are strings attached, therefore, I can't give the money to the general fund. I can only loan it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Garcetti?
Just wanted to instruct related to this, because I know there's an ongoing dispute with the members of this unit that they have before us, that if we can refer that to ERC, to see if we can give direction to possibly withdraw that grievance that they have as a condition of this. I think that would be probably along the lines of what Mr. Kocorian was saying, a good idea. Also, on the special funds, to Mr. Kocorian's point, I want to put out there again on the record, all the very special funds that are out there, I think we did scrub last year. We scrubbed this year and found, was it 12 million, Sharon? So there's 12 million. Could you just walk us through that amount and what sorts of areas in non-crisis budget years those funds have been going to do community work, different projects? And it's a very complicated thing to do for the reasons Mr. Kocorian stated, which is that they have various conditions, but so that nobody thinks we're just starting that. We actually have done that very significantly as part of how we're balancing the budget these past years.
That's correct. Last year, as part of the council's commitment to the budget balancing efforts, a lot of those accounts were scrubbed. These were primarily accounts that are used for community amenity projects within council districts. In fact, as part of the budget process last year, pardon? On some of them, as part of settlement, yes. Those were settlement dollars, but there are also other types of funds as well. And the council, as part of that commitment, last year scrubbed about 12 million dollars that was provided back to the general fund. And so in addition to that, as part of the budget adoption this past year for the 2010-11 budget, the pipeline monies that Mr. Zine was referring to was actually returned to the general fund as part of that budget balancing as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Lavange?
Thank you very much. I know one of the, Mr. Zine, when you were speaking, there used to be a fire department hydrant fund. It had 42 million dollars one year. That was scrubbed, if that's the proper word. Is that correct, the fire department fund?
There was a fire hydrant fund?
Fire hydrant fund.
Yes, those funds last year were sheeted back to the general fund. Those were deposits made many, many years ago, 20, 30 years ago. And perhaps Ms. Huber can describe the process.
Right, but anyway, that's all right. But do we have to repay those funds one day?
Pardon?
We have to repay those funds one day?
No, no, sir. Those funds are general fund receipts now.
Okay, so there's many things I got. The thing I'd like to ask the CAO's office, if you worked it in and out, and you were the manager of the Hollywood store across from Hollywood High at Orange and Sunset, and they called you today, the manager in Baldwin Hills and said, Baldwin Park, had said, what, how many double-doubles did you sell yesterday between 11 and 4? And how many singles? You could give them that answer, because that's how business operates. How much real information do we have and timely information do we have? And how technology savvy are you as a CAO's office in order to know exactly where all these funds are?
We would have to look in FMIS and do a...
Explain it, because the public's watching, what FMSS is.
That is our Financial Management Information System, and we know that we can query within that system to find out what funds are available within the accounts.
Absolutely.
But I just don't have it in front of me today.
I got it. But absolutely, you've looked at absolutely everything and keep looking and turning it over.
We look at it every year and look for every option.
Every month you look, every day. You could tell us how many building permits were issued in Van Nuys last week if you wanted to right now.
If I called Building and Safety and got the answer, yes.
Right, whatever it is. So this is information. So, Mr. Zine, I just wanted to follow up. We're looking for all this thing. I want to also rise, Mr. Smith, thank you, and also want to compliment Mr. Reyes, and also the predecessor there in the 1st District, on what you did at Bishop's Canyon, which was a fund that was corrected on needs of their Mr. Hernandez as well. But Mr. Reyes is always the champion of that. So, Mr. Smith, you're the champion here, which is very effective because it's important. And I just want to rise and thank you. You were the champion when you worked for Mr. Burnson and probably crafted this measure in some way and some thought, and I just want to thank you. And I want to thank the CAO's office and CLA's office.
Thank you, Mr. Lavange. Mr. Alarcon?
Councilmembers, I would only caution, as we ask for this study, that we recognize that these are commitments the city has made, and I believe contracts, that the city has made with the communities regarding negative environmental impacts typically that are incurred and continue to be incurred by the community. In the case of the landfills, it takes 30 years to close these landfills. Any community benefits agreement, and the courts have held, the community benefits agreements are contracts that are undermined, could thwart not only the community amenities, but also the program that we put in place that underlines this. So for example, extracting methane gas that generates profit, which in part goes back to the community and goes, then goes to the city's general fund. You know, if we pull back on the community agreement, then do we stop the methane extraction from the landfill? That puts us in a very precarious legal situation. And I believe it's sticking your finger deep into the eyes of the neighborhoods who have to put up with these negative environmental impacts. There's a reason why these amenities agreements are crafted. They're crafted because the communities are getting damaged environmentally, and incurring those negative impacts has to be recovered. And so they strike an agreement with the city to provide community benefits agreements. And so I caution my colleagues to be very careful as we proceed. It's not an issue of district money. It's an issue of a policy that was set in place for the purposes of benefiting Los Angeles as a whole, but one community is bearing the burden that other communities don't have to bear, so they should get some mitigation for it. That's exactly what is going on here. It's not just about dollars and cents. It's about promises made that need to be kept.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Mr. Kardanis.
Thank you very much. Yes, we need to keep promises, et cetera, but the thing that I note on this motion, and I would like to thank Greg Smith, is that this is a loan of those funds. And this is a loan of these funds. This is not an ever-ending loan. The way I read it, it says that this money will go back into the fund over the next 24 months or two budget cycles. And so in that sense, I think that Mr. Smith has figured out a creative way to actually meet the responsibilities and the concerns of the community, yet at the same time, he's been willing to stretch and help out the general fund responsibilities and obligations to better balance where we have our police officers and our detention officers, et cetera. I do agree that with those of you who believe that police officers, who are sworn officers, who people have hired, we've hired on behalf of the public to police our streets, should be policing our streets and should not be doing the work of detention officers, which is a different kind of work. And they should not be sitting behind a desk doing civilian work where we have the opportunity and the budgets to hire civilians to do that as well. So I think this is a great opportunity for us to look at a specific opportunity and a specific fund where Mr. Smith has been generous enough, and I believe well-balanced enough, to make sure that he warrants for his community that the money will not be lost, that the money will be here. I'll give you an example. One of my colleagues, just being a freshman on the council, actually agreed to help out the general fund with about 10 million dollars that had been accumulating for a very, 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 very important project in his district. And what I told that freshman council member a few years ago, I said, "Don't do it." I said, "I appreciate your generosity, but don't do it, because your community will never see that money again." And sure enough, that person's been lamenting every single budget cycle because that money, 1 million or 2 million or that 10 million dollars, is not going back to his community. But in this particular case, it is not an open-ended promise. It is not a very loosely written document. It is a document that specifically says that this 600 and some thousand dollars is going to go back into that fund over the next two budget cycles. Is that correct, Mr. Smith? So therefore, I believe that Mr. Smith is being careful and responsible with the commitments and legal responsibilities of this fund, as Mr. Alarcon has pointed out. But at the same time, I think this is a very generous opportunity for Mr. Smith to solve a budget problem that otherwise we haven't been able to solve. So I want to thank you, Mr. Smith, for your generosity, creativity, and also being properly balanced and protecting the district that you represent and the funds that these, the community that these funds will eventually be helping, but at the same time, in the interim, you're able to give a win-win-win to everybody throughout the city. So thank you very much. In addition to that, Mr. Zine, I look forward to the opportunity for us to have a very responsible, non-political conversation about all of these special funds, because the last thing I want to see happen is that a poor community like Pacoima or Sun Valley gives up a few hundred thousand dollars and, poof, it's budget dust in the $4 billion overall general fund budget of the city, and all of a sudden, that community never sees that money back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kardanis. Our next speaker is Mr. Zine.
Just to follow up as this discussion is continued, Commander, you're safe and secure. Don't worry about it. You're going to get your money to get that done. The issue regarding borrowing versus granting for a project on the report back with all these special funds, we need to have that clarified, which ones we can borrow from, if the borrowing's without interest, or if it's a grant, it doesn't have to be repaid, so we can have the full focus. And I think it'd be good for my colleagues and the public to know whether we have 50 special funds, or 100 special funds, or 1,000 special funds. I didn't know we had a fire plug fund, but there's probably a whole lot of innocuous funds out there that we don't know about that are hidden away someplace. But we need a comprehensive list. So are you saying they can punch a button in the computer and they'll come up with all the funds and how much is in there right now?
It will take a little bit more time than just punching a button, because we do have an older FMIS system, and we do have to go in and verify if there are any uses for the funds that have been identified.
But is it kept current? Whatever we have that we, I mean, if I was, like Mr. Lavange talked about, in and out of, all the retailers can tell you how much they sold that particular day. Do we have a cumbersome task, or is it relatively simple to determine? If I ask the police department how many arrests they made last night, they can tell me that. Do we have an in-depth review, an in-depth investigation, or is it relatively simple to get this information?
It will be somewhat simple to get the information, but we are just very resource-constrained right now. And so I do need some time.
So it's not that it's a lack of a system, it's a lack of personnel to get that?
And the fact that, you know, we're looking at how to balance the current year budget and all the options available for that, as well as working on next year's proposed budget and all of the other things that we're required to do.
Okay, so you're working multiple tasks, but it's not that we don't have a system available that we can...
And we just need to do a little vetting of the information to make sure it's as accurate as possible.
Okay, but if we can add to what Mr. Kocorian added to the motion I made, add the other aspect, reborrowing versus granting, to address Mr. Alarcon's concern about the money being paid back to the communities.
Thank you.
Mr. Lavange?
I just one thing do I wanted to just say, because I thought about is transparency. We are not allowed, and the city attorney, to post, who's the biggest taxpayer in Los Angeles as far as business taxes? Isn't that confidential information?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it is confidential. I remember, they're not in business anymore, but I remember years ago, it was Carnation when they had their dairies up in the city that was the biggest taxpayer years ago. That's important to know as far as all this information out here. And for the record, Ms. Han, because I want to let you know when you park in one of those parking lots, years ago, John Fogle with Joan Flores arranged for the transfer money for the Wilshire Western Parking Meter Fund to help the people of San Pedro. So the great thing that Mr. Smith is doing is following that tradition of helping each other. So that's real important. So I just wanted to lay that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have one speaker, Card, John Walsh.
Thank you, John Walsh of HollywoodHighlands.org, and of course, the Jan Perry Exploratory Committee for Mayor. This barely legal transfer of funds delays for years the completion of the Sunshine Canyon toxic cleanup. You had a budget. The budget had 700, $1,000 of money, 18,675 dollars worth of money towards the cleanup. You're removing that money, so therefore, it's green murder. Its toxic cleanup has been suspended, and if you want to get creative, why don't you get creative with switching money, what have you, and do it to keep the brownouts, to get rid of the brownouts? You get up here and say, there's no way we can have full paramedic services. It's impossible. But then, when you need money for civilian detention officers, not sworn officers, suddenly you find it like that. Meanwhile, nobody out there knows whether the fire station nearest you at this very moment has a paramedic team. And if it doesn't, that means an extra mile or two when they come for your heart attack. And this place gives you a heart attack, I can tell you. I'm going to finish by saying, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'm sorry that Mr. Parks is out running for office and Mr. Weezer is out running for office. They couldn't show up. HollywoodHighlands.org for the truth about this city. Thank you.
Thank you. And to close, Mr. Smith, did you want to speak again?
Thank you. That was a very good discussion, and I appreciate Mr. Zine's interest in those other funds. Actually, we did have a report on that a couple of years ago, but it's worthy of looking into some more. As for Mrs. Walsh's comments, this doesn't touch a penny of cleanup money. This is a lawsuit settlement in addition to the cleanup money that goes to the community. Give you an idea what we spent that money for. We gave a couple hundred thousand dollars to the Van Gogh School, elementary school, to build a center for seniors to come to the school and work with kids. We purchased a park in Granada Hills for 2 million dollars. We're working with Mr. Alarcon on a project for the soccer and baseball fields, which is another 2 million. is another 2 million dollars. These were Granada Hills-related functions of what the money was supposed to be spent for. Has nothing to do with cleanup, that is a legally mandated process, and the funds are there for the cleanup. It didn't touch a penny of that. So this is the kind of money it's used for, this is an appropriate use, because it is a loan, it is not a transfer away from Granada Hills, that money comes back, and it is truly surplus money at this moment, there are no projects in the queue waiting for that money. This is an appropriate use. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. That concludes discussion on this side. And, Mr. Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
13 ayes.
Thank you very much. Next item, Mr. Clerk? Oh, that item will go forth with, thank you, Mr. Smith.
Madam President, for clarification on item one that was continued to March 22nd, the city attorney is advising that be continued to February 22nd.
All right, well, if there's no objection to that, then we will continue that item as requested by the city attorney to February the 22nd.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motions are posted and referred.
There's an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Weezer requests to be excused to leave at 11:00 a.m. on February 25th for city business. That meets council policy.
All right, that'll be without objection?
Desk is clear.
All right, members, are there any announcements? Any announcements? Would you all please rise for adjourning motions? Members, are there any adjourning motions? If there are no adjourning motions, I will ask the clerk to call the roll. All right, then the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.